Did you go watch the game last year?
I didn't watch it. I didn't feel down.
I didn't like it. It's been a couple of years since I've been down.
You know, I told somebody, I said, "I played chess this day, and he's saying that I'm being... This thing's not going to watch here."
Blue Heaven.
Alright, alright. Good evening. We're gonna call the meeting to order. Everybody stand to the pledge of allegiance and allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we have a moment of silence. Alright, need approval for the agenda?
Chairman, I believe we have a few additions to the agenda.
Correct. We're gonna move number 10, tax assessor Diana Norton, to an under number three, under public comment. Number five, we're gonna have a A and a B. A B will be memorandum of agreement with the US Department of Air Control Natural Resources Water Conservation District. And down here on number 11, B will be South Richard Broad MPO River Rural Transit Representation. That will be B, and personnel will be C, and property D, which will be in closed section.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the amended agenda.
Second?
All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we allow Commissioner Wrecker, who's with us, to be assumed to attend and vote remotely.
Everybody in favor?
I'll second that motion.
Show of hand. Four overall vote.
Thank you, Alan.
Yes, sir, sure. Alright, number two, approval of November 10th, 2020 regular minutes, and November 24th, 2020 special minutes.
I review those. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Not.
Five of them. Alright, number three, we have anybody for public comment?
No public comment.
No public comment. We're gonna go ahead, number 10, Diana Norton, tax assessor, tax refunds and releases.
Good evening, Diane.
So I'm here to present the October and November releases and refunds.
That will be in your book. Matt, have you got yours? Have you got a book with you?
Yeah, I've got the one from October.
Okay, alright. Okay. Is there any question to all this when you get time to look at it? Dan, you got any questions? Everything look good to you?
Dan, is this more or less than usually comes through? Is this more or less now?
I think October's has several on it because you're seeing all the trash cards.
Okay.
And from here on out, you won't be seeing those.
Now, do you recommend us to approve these, and you look them over, and you recommend us to do this?
To approve them? Do we need approval on these, Dan?
There wasn't a strict question. I'm just saying that needs to be said publicly so we can go with it.
It is not necessary for us to approve if it is just the card fee. The only thing that the assessor is required to, Donnie, correct me here, to present are actually tax releases, and the card is not a tax, correct?
That's correct. On any of these that are listed here, if it is related to a release and a refund of the ad valorem tax,
Correct.
then there's a specific procedure, and only the county commissioners have the authority to do those
Correct.
releases and refunds. And it actually requires something in the form of a hearing. However, those hearings can be bypassed. If your assessor has reviewed it and gives you a recommendation based upon that review, that she has reviewed the purposes behind it, and is recommending that there's statutory authority for you to do that. Now, regarding anything that's on a trash card, we talked about that at our work sessions, and we, and basically, that's not subject to the Machinery Act.
Correct.
And the county commissioners can do whatever you desire based upon the majority favor on the tax cards.
So, I guess my question being, the ones that say landfill error, those are related to the...
Those are what Samius gave us to take off. Correct. Those are what Samius gave us to take off.
Okay. So, the actual tax adjustments would be the ones that are some, otherwise identified?
Correct.
And in the future, the only ones that would need to be presented by the assessor's office would be those which were directly taxed?
That's true, and we're working with Theragit because it's the computer system that generates this report, not us. So, everything that we do as an adjustment shows up on this report.
So, do we need, or we don't need to vote on this approval? We want to need to vote on the taxes?
Yeah, you definitely have to vote on the... I guess let's take it in two sections, the way I understand it. Everything that is a landfill error is a tax card adjustment, correct?
Yes.
And then everything else is a refund of the ad valorem taxes, correct?
Yes.
And everything that is a landfill error, you're basically getting that from the landfill director. Is that correct? And then, what's not a landfill error, you have to do those. And it's your recommendation to these commissioners that the taxpayer is entitled to that refund and release based upon your review and investigation. Is that correct?
Yep.
So, I think it's gonna require your vote.
Okay.
I think you, what I would do, just to keep it clean, I would do it in two separate votes. One on the landfill issues, and then one on the releasing refunds of the ad valorem tax. I just think it's a good idea, since you've never seen these before, then something is brought to the commissioners, or at least you to have something of record that your departments have reviewed this, and that they've investigated each of these. And then that way, they can tell you whether or not they are recommending that you take this action, or whether they are not recommending that you take it. That way, you folks have something of record that you can rely upon as to why you took the action.
Anybody got any questions on these?
So, Donnie, moving forward, do I keep the landfill on there, or try to get them to take it off?
Well, I think the landfill can only be adjusted under the process that we have right now by the commissioners. So, I think that it would be a good idea for both of them to be brought now.
Okay, because November, we had them take them off, so the landfill is not on there.
Yes, well, it's different.
And if we're gonna have the ones for the landfill, then what you may wanna do is, if Sam wants those released, then he needs to come in and tell the commissioners that he's reviewed them, and he wants them to be...
Is that before we do them?
Before the tax office takes them off, I think you need board. The commissioners are working on that process right now, that appeals process.
Yes.
Am I not correct?
Yes, correct. We've had two meetings. Yes.
So, I think before they come off the tax records, the commissioners do.
That's a good question.
Okay, do you want them separate, Donnie? I think apart from Diane's question.
I would do them separate. I think what Diane is asking is that before she actually takes off the landfill cards, does she want her to be able to take that off based upon just Sam's recommendation? Or are you going to direct her to take them off only when you approve it? So, let's talk about that.
Yeah.
So, as far as the landfill cards, since we've not formally adopted what that process is, are you all comfortable in just letting Sam take that initial step to take them off, to reimburse the tax cards? And if he sends a report over to Diana, then allow her to take them off without that having to come to you right now?
What do you all think?
That's one of them, and then...
That's one of them.
Who makes the decision now, as far as who is taxed?
We put them on when a building come, when we get a permit and a building permit. We put them in the system. And then if they say, you know, it's not livable or whatever, then they go to Sam. And then Sam comes to me and gives me paperwork to take them off.
He's the one physically goes with it.
You guys make the assessment from the tax office, and then...
And we have to put the fee on.
That's exactly.
Sammy makes the assessment that it's no longer being necessary or appropriate.
And then what we don't have, Mr. Garrison, would be if someone disagrees with Sam's assessment, then we're trying to figure out a process by which that can then be appealed to this board.
And there is a working...
But we not got there.
That part that I serve on, that is working on that process.
And as part of that process, are we gonna address the issue of nonprofits? I notice we still have the elderly out here as well.
Would've been so.
Exemptions. Churches, fire departments.
That is where, what we're doing, we're leaving that with Sam for him to make that initial determination. And then if those folks disagree with that, then we're sitting for the process where they can appeal to this board. So, that will be in place, but we are not...
They will have to appeal it each year, though.
But not with churches, though? Correct. The church issue that we've been through?
No, the only people that have been exempted is the elderly exempt.
Correct.
It sounds like this is still in works, in working, so...
It is.
I'm in the opinion that as long as there's a judicial process where there's a grievance, someone to grieve to, and then there's a process should they not accept that grievance, to be able to grieve to a panel, then just whatever. Sam and Diana were gonna work out and trust their judgment in it.
You putting that on the floor as a motion?
I make a motion that we allow
Sam.
Sam, more particularly, the sanitation department to make the decision, and then forward that decision on to the tax office.
I'll second that.
That's our motion.
I think the discussion on that part is that that's the only expedient, expedition, excuse me, way to do that, yes.
Yes. Matt, what do you think?
You got any thoughts on that, Matt?
So, I'm having a little trouble with the... Alright, sorry, the delay's messing with me here.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me get back out of the YouTube feed because that was the only way I could hear Diana listening to the YouTube feed. Alright, can you guys hear me better now?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, the only way I could hear Diana through the thing was with the YouTube feed. So, I had that going, and then there was some crazy feedback, and so I apologize for being disruptive.
Alright, okay.
But as far as the, you know, I guess my thing is, is if, as long as there's a fair way to review everything, that someone has to appeal process, if necessary, I'm okay with moving forward within the way, the way that Commissioner Garrison has suggested.
Okay. My call of question.
I guess I just have one point of clarity. This is until we get an actual process in place, as was previously discussed.
Yes. All in favor? Five of them.
So, that should answer your first question.
Right, and so do I keep the adjustments on this report? Just so y'all know what's coming off?
What do y'all think? Did you hear, Matt? She was wanting to know if they, what they take off, did you still want on the report?
Yeah, I mean, I really think we ought to. I think there needs to be a level of accountability for us so that we know what's going on.
Okay.
And we just can't, you know, plead ignorance if something comes up down the road. I think we need, we need to be held accountable.
As long as there's differentiation between the codes or the causes or reasons which stand, and then we've done a good job of noticing so.
Sound good?
And then let's have a second vote on the actual refunds.
Release and refunds of the tax.
But it's not landfills.
Okay, I will move that we release the recommended tax refunds from the assessor's office.
I would second that based on our assessor's recommendation.
That is for these two months, presumably.
For the two months, that gets us current.
This is, this is for the tax release, Matt?
Yeah.
So, those refunds that we're seeing on this list, do those reflect the decisions made by the Board of Equalization and Review as well?
Some of them do, yes.
Some of them do, yes.
Some of them are refunds where they are paid.
Some of them are refunds.
Very good. Just make the sure, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Got a motion, got a second? Everybody good? Vote? Five of them. Alright.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
Alright. Number four, the public hearing community development block grant. Ms. Bellamy, how are you?
I'm good. Mr. Chairman, if you could just give me a second to get this ready.
Yes, ma'am, no problem.
Now, this is a continuation, which is detailed, and I want you to actually finish this process. So, we'll be ready for the next vote.
Can you see that, Matt? Matt, can you see any left? Could you see what's up?
Am I in this right? Can they see it?
No, he said it's okay.
And I will read it, if it will make it a little bit better. So, this is an issue that you continued from your meeting last, last month. And I do wanna say for the record, because this is a public hearing process for potential dollars, a lot of this information needs to be in the minutes. But I do officially need to state, there is no open CBDG, CV funding at this time. I am here at the request of the Land and Sky Regional Council. And so, they've sent a couple of emails requesting that we finish this process, which will allow Madison County to be in line and be ready if additional dollars are provided in the next budget year or in the next calendar year. Either way, we will be ready. So, I want to officially state, we are not officially applying for dollars right now. So, these are the projects we were going to apply or submit for funding. And so, we need to go through this process in order to create an application if there is a potential funding source, okay? So, today, I'm asking for a couple of things. We need to review the projects, the priorities, the grant process, and have the public hearing. So, I won't read everything to you, but I wanted to make sure we had it just for your memory. Remember, this money came because of HUD, allotted North Carolina over $28 million. And when they did that, they said, "We would like applications that will meet the needs for cities and counties that don't receive entitlement funds." Entitlement funds are funds that come directly from HUD to communities. And so, Madison County is not an entitlement city. That means we do not get a direct allocation from HUD. And so, that's what qualifies Madison County to be able to compete, or would have been able to compete for these particular funds and potential funds in the future. So, what have we done? So, originally, in September, we looked at policies to make sure we're in alignment. We looked at procurement, we looked at making sure we had a community engagement policy. We made sure everything was okay. The lawyer presented it in September, and you all approved that process. In October, we had our first public hearing. We had comments from the public at that time. And since that, November the 10th was going to be the second public hearing. So, we've received public comments. We did on October 13th. We had public comments via emails, we had meetings, we had citizen participation committee meetings. The Madison County Economic Development Board also had comments on this. The Madison County Fairgrounds also had, the board also considered the comment, provided comments on this issue. And the Mars Hill Anderson Rosenwall Board also provided comments on this issue. So, the first project for consideration, we looked at the Health Department. Of course, the Health Department is on the front line of this issue. And so, they have hired a team to look at developing two rooms downstairs that could just address COVID issues, as well as, as well as other communicable disease issues. And so, this is the team that they've created or hired in order to lead that effort with design and looking at the cost. And so, that's the design team. So, to be clear, this is not, it would not be an in-house project. We would have subject matter experts making sure that the rooms that will be developed would be safe, would be efficient, and would be designed correctly. And so, here's a preliminary drawing of what they would do. And if you look at the budget that's projected, the total cost is projected to be $300,000. And that would make sure that if anybody, anybody has TB, they would have COVID. They would be protected when they come in from spreading their disease to other staff members or people who are with them. And so, it would be a top-notch facility that would have been paid for through this grant or potential grants. The next issue is the fairgrounds. One of the issues that we have found with COVID is, the Health Department staff has to furnish food for anybody that they have said you need to quarantine. And so, that means your staff is actually making sure the individuals from their department go get groceries. Where the fairgrounds has said, "Hey, get us a building, and we could be a supply place to house additional food, to store large numbers of quantities of food." Say we have farmers who had extra produce they want to provide. It would be another place for us to have that facility. And so, their project has requested $236,000 to be able to use their facility, a new facility, to create a place that would be safe for individuals to have food distribution. So, looking at this. So, in order for this to work, you need a good grant writer. And so, one of the great things is... And so one of the great things is having a good partnership. And so the Dogwood Health Trust is providing consultants to help write this grant. And the consultants would have been here tonight, and I said, well, don't worry about that, I'll present the rest of the items, but they were willing to come. And these are the consultants that have been hired in order for us to be able to create a fantastic competitive grant. Just so you know, one of the grants that they recently wrote garnered Buncombe County's Tourism Development Authority and Chamber of Commerce over $400,000 from the Golden Leaf Foundation. So these individuals have experience, and they came recommended from the Landis Sky Regional Council. And Madison County is not paying any dollars at all to pay for their services. So had they been here, they would have stood up and they talked about this project. This is the admin building. And so we have a lot of county employees located in this facility. And so we have looked at, what can we do to make sure that it's a safe facility, not only for the staff, but for the individuals who come to do business in the admin building? And so we looked at some procedures that could be put in place to make it safer, and it will cost $14,000 to put in a filtration system to make it safer for the general public as well as the staff. Next is the Mars Hill Anderson Rosenwall School Project. This will provide a safe place for students to gather and to do homework or community activities in the Mars Hill area. And that project, they requested $15,000. And one of the larger issues that need to be addressed is our telecommunications, our website, making sure we have the ability for people to get information about COVID, what's going on, how testing is going, all that information in a user-friendly way, and that means getting a new website. This also includes changing our email system to make it safer. I don't know if you recall that there have been counties that were impacted by cyber bullies who've come in to interrogate the systems? Well, this will help prevent that. And so this is the cost of that, making sure that we have one of the safest systems. And because it would be a county-wide system, it does come with a hefty price tag, but it's all put in the grant, and this is an allowable expense, because it not only makes it easier for the staff, but also the general public. The last thing is the administration. So looking at what's necessary, the Health Department contracts, the fairgrounds, the administration building, contracts for maintenance, information technology, the design team, administrative coordination, and accounting. Those are a lot of responsibilities to put on existing staff. This grant will allow up to $90,000 for us to hire individuals to assist with ensuring that we are meeting the needs of the grant. That way, the existing staff will not have the burden of putting on, making sure that everything's done within the grant cycle and the way it's supposed to be done. So we could hire somebody to help with bookkeeping, to ensure that all the invoices and the receipts are received for purchases in order to ensure that everything is done correctly. And that way, it won't put an extra strain on existing staff. We could have somebody to help with admin, to ensure that appointments are made and things of that nature, to ensure that everything's been done correctly. And so we thought about this process because we didn't want to burden existing staff with this new funding source. So now I will ask you to open the public hearing, allow for questions after the public hearing, and then ask you to approve the resolution for us apply for these funds.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go to public hearing?
Second.
All in favor? Matt, this is going to a public hearing? Do you hear? Okay. Five oh. No? Any public comment? No public comment, okay?
Terry, I have just a few questions, just points of clarity.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. Just, number one, great job partnering with Dogwood Trust, getting us some good valuable resources to do the grant writing and no cost to the county, so. And I definitely like the initiatives of multifaceted, where we're reaching out to the different entities of our county, putting money forth. I know we, the last commissioner's meeting, there was information brought out about trying to upgrade the pressure rooms in the Health Department, so this is another opportunity should that money become available as a preparatory step to be able to meet those goals. And also see some, some initiatives put forward to address IT and the concerns they have long-term. So I definitely like those initiatives. Just a few points of clarity, the, and these are just little things, the food storage facility, I'm taking that that would also include a freezer as well as dry goods storage?
It does, and so originally the price tag was a little lower, and we thought about, well, how best to make sure that this project is successful? So yes, sir, it does include additional storage facilities.
And the, the four, thank you, the $14,000 filtration system, is that something that would be installed by private contractors, or is that, would that?
It is.
May include responsibility for us to do this?
In order to get that estimate, instead of just using numbers that we thought would be good, we actually brought in a consultant from MB Haynes to look at our system, and they were able to go to the roof, they went, look at the ventilation system, to give us a good estimate on what it would cost to put in one of the best systems that will meet the needs for our current needs and future needs.
Very good, thank you. Probably just one more. The $15,000 for the Rosenwall Project, which I'm definitely in favor of, but was there another prior $15,000 that was allocated for that project? And could you just differentiate the difference?
That's coming up in a minute.
As a matter of fact, it's going to come later on the agenda, and so there is a difference. So the $15,000 that was previously allotted, and that was March 10th, 2020 of this year, they, we had a hearing for those funds, that was for digital divide. So they could use that for computers, notepads, monitors, anything to help give people information, and so that's there. But with the $15,000 now, they could do something for clear screens, they can do anything that's going to help people gather safely. And so if that's, if they have table needs, where they need something where it can clean up, and the tables that they have are not sufficient, if they need chairs that are stackable that they can clean. So it's whatever they need in order to make sure when they have people in their facility, it helps decrease the spread of COVID. And so it's just making it safer for people to get together in one place. So if they needed a new ventilation system, they can use it for that. So they have a lot of different ways they could use that money.
Thank you. Just one last thing, I realize this isn't Carers money, so it's different. That being said, I, I know that we've got a, something on the agenda that deals with courthouse, is there any provisions as far as any allocation for courthouse upgrades that are having to be made necessarily?
Not, not in this particular project, the courthouse will be in a separate, and will be discussed in courthouse a little bit later.
Right.
But not in this project, because this project actually was begun before the reconsideration for working on the courthouse.
All right.
So it was not initially included, okay?
Good presentation, thank you.
No, thank you, great questions.
Mr. Chairman, I move we close the public hearing?
Second.
Close, second? All in favor of close?
Oh, I have.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. I'm sorry, I know that this is preparatory, but being such, is this going to be any kind of grant fund matching requirements?
No, that's, I'm glad you asked, that's a wonderful question. No, there are no matching grant requirements. And so this is an opportunity, if it is available to us again, is a first come, first served opportunity. If we have this opportunity to get these dollars, we don't have to do any matches, we don't have to do anything that will require any existing tax dollars from Madison County to be, to use for this project. If we were doing a larger project, we could, you know, do that if we wanted to, but it's not required, and that's an amazing part of this process.
Very good, thank you, I'm sorry.
Hold on, hold on.
Got a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I also would say, you know, this, the fact that we're going to be pre-qualified and in a much better position next time this plan comes up, we will not have to go back through this process, that's what, that also been told us, we'll be ready to, to move, so.
You got a motion?
I second it, yes.
Second. All in favor? Five oh, maybe.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you. Good luck tomorrow.
Number five brings us to Brandon Young, Soil and Water Conservation Shared Personal Mutual Aid Agreement.
Hi, Brandon.
Good evening, Brandon.
Hey, good evening, everybody.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you. I try not to take up much of your time.
And there is a A and a B, so this is A on this one.
Yes, sir, mutual aid agreement is A, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the mutual aid agreement, in a nutshell, is an agreement between the Soil and Water Districts across the state. Each district across the state gets to decide whether they want to be a part of this or not. Our board has decided they would like to be, and since the staff, our county employees, were presenting this to you all to vote on and discuss if you like. But essentially, in a nutshell, what this mutual aid agreement is, what it consists of, is there's a lot of resource, there's a lot of disasters that happen across the state, as you're well aware of. Sometimes they happen up here, and a lot of times they happen down the coast and everywhere in between, but the Soil and Water Districts have a good, long history of helping each other out. If there's a need somewhere else, you know, we're, we're neighborly with our, with our other districts, and it reciprocates well. So this is just formalizing that, that we're going to continue as Soil and Water Districts to help each other out in times of need. And it also sort of formalizes the, the need for trainings, especially once we get over this COVID hump and we get back to actually going in-person, doing these things again. It's sort of, just kind of cements that, that that's okay, that it's okay to travel to another county, another neighboring county to have that training and sort of thing. So in a basic nutshell, that's kind of what this is. Again, you know, it states in this, I don't know if y'all have had a chance to read this or not, but it states, you know, that the foremost responsibility is to its own citizens, so Madison County for Madison Soil and Water District, Madison County is always number one, we got to take care of ourselves, and then, you know, if a, if a need arises somewhere else, then so be it, and we'll, we'll try to help out as we can. But there's no obligation to this. We're not signing any kind of agreement here that says we have to go anywhere else to help somebody else in, in a time of need, a time of disaster, it's just saying that we're okay with the idea of that. We've been doing trainings and things to gain knowledge and skills and abilities, so just to continue doing that. And just a neat thing, it's already happened with this, Buncombe County Soil and Water has already agreed to this with their district and their county. They've already sent us a letter, as y'all know, that Tyler is having some health issues, and me and him's the, we're the staff for Soil and Water, and so with his health issues, they just wanted to send us a letter to say, we're, we're here for you if you need anything. And that, that kind of stemmed in part from, you know, agreeing to this mutual aid agreement. So.
Can we get over this, Don? Good with you?
Good with it as long as Soil and Water Board is, is fine with the conditions. All of it. If they are, then basically we're just giving them the county's rubber stamp on that. Because Mr. Garrison can, mutual aid agreements are common between various agencies throughout the state, and this is just a specific one that we work for Soil and Water. The counties have general authority to take into account that.
Make a motion? You approve? Any, any questions on this first?
I think, Don, just a point of clarity, this is the same, same contractual agreement, mutual aid agreement that other folks, that other entities, agencies, the state have signed.
As, as far as I'm aware, we have complete, you all have complete control or authority, and my board as well, to make any changes if we, if we so desire. My board looked over it, said, no, it looks good the way it is, and.
It's consistent with other?
It is consistent, yes, sir. Yes, sir, it is consistent.
You good, Matt? Matt, you good?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the mutual aid agreement as presented by Soil and Water Department head and board.
Got a motion?
Second motion?
Second? Vote? Five oh, maybe. All right.
Resolution. The memorandum of agreement.
Part B is memorandum of agreement, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, Natural Resources, Water Conservation District.
Yes, so this one looks a little wordy, but this is a pretty common document that comes around every four years or so, that the NRCS sort of initiates and hands off to our partnering agencies such as county, district, Division of Soil and Water, so forth. This is just, in a nutshell, again, just to say, we want to continue working together, doing what we've been doing, and continue to put conservation on the ground, continue to do conservation plans, and work with these landowners to help address their natural resource concerns, and just to continue the partnership that we've been doing for a really long time. This is just a formal document that they request of us to get filled out every so often.
Brandon, this one comes from USDA, right?
It does.
Thank you.
One of our biggest partners with what we do is the NRCS, which is underneath the USDA. They're sort of the federal counterpart to Soil and Water Districts.
Understood. Any questions on this?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman?
Matt? Matt, you got anything? Okay, that's good. Motion approved. Second? All in favor? Five oh, maybe.
I would.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time. Y'all take care, good to see you.
Next, we got Ms. Bellamy, Community and Economic Development Director of Anderson Rosenwall School Digital Literacy Training and Funding Agreement.
So for this one, commissioners, we just talked, we just referenced this issue, and so this is just a contract supporting the funds that we've already provided the individual through. So it's $15,000 that we've already allotted to them, that was approved, so this just mandates that they provide information about their purchases and provide us information of the completion of the grant.
Got you. Mr. Chairman, there being no questions, I will move that we approve the Anderson Rosenwall School Digital Training Funding Agreement as presented.
Second motion?
All in favor? Five oh, maybe. Thank you, Ms. Bellamy. Next, we got Jamie Lutz for Information Technology Director, Courthouse Audio System. Hey, Jamie, how are you?
Yeah, good, how y'all doing?
Good, huh? And you got this in front of you here, Michael, you got that, Matt?
Obviously.
Uh, you may not, is this sent electronically to Matt or not, the third one? No?
Yeah.
Matt, we have a third estimate that came in today, okay? And two are in your materials. Okay? He's good.
All right. Yeah, under request from Mark Cody, with the upcoming courthouse adjustments for the courtroom, we are looking to upgrade the audio system. And with that, the IT department had four different companies come in to look at the infrastructure and to make the changes that Mark Cody advised. That includes an extra set of speakers in the back, some wireless mics, a projector screen that can be used by anybody that uses the room. And with that, we had Haynes Pro is going to be the second most, it's right at $11,000. But you'll notice that the first one does not include like a projector or the screen. So the second guy from Greer, South Carolina, we were really impressed. Evan and Mason met with him, and they were really pleased. He was very informative, he actually took his time and looked at everything, so we're definitely would go with them if we could. You'll see that like the third, the one that Matt doesn't have, the one that's in front of you is for $33,000. It's very in-depth, but we still feel like it doesn't cover just like what the Haynes Pro guide does.
And now, Jamie, what this is doing, it's really bringing that courtroom up to first world, not just for the court system, but for everybody else that may use that.
He has, yeah. He's done many courthouses in South Carolina and North Carolina, the area. He was very familiar with the process, so, and I feel like his bid or his price really showed that. Like he knew kind of where to come in at, and what to operate, so.
That would have been my question, whether or not they have experience in courtroom.
Yes.
Of the acoustics required.
Yes, and ours is a challenge, and with the barriers coming, the plexiglass, so it's going to be a lot different. So there is a need to upgrade our infrastructure, but also add to it. So this is an opportunity to do that. I feel like it's a very good improvement.
How shall we pay for it?
Well, what we are doing tonight, we are requesting permission and approval for this. The exact funding will depend on what Mark is able to get from the state, or what we may be able to have to do. Otherwise, Carrie and I have reviewed and we're quite certain that this part will not be covered under COVID, okay? Whereas the shield will be covered under COVID. Now, that's the current COVID funding. But what we need tonight is the approval that when the funding is secured, that we will go with this contractor, okay? And we got word just this afternoon, right before the meeting, that Mark had secured approval for the windows and the state process, and I don't know if Carrie's had a chance to check her email or not, but he gave us a couple of options, and the folks in Raleigh did clear that for that part. But tonight, we just want the approval based on our IT department's recommendation. And as soon as we have the exact secure line of funding, we will notify the board on that. Very good comments.
Just a couple of points of clarity. Appreciate your research. It's always good to get more than one bid, and take it, all of them are probably not local, just based on the nature of the work and the cost. Just a point of concern is that when one bid's 33,000 and two are 11,000, just making sure we are getting a system that not only will work for now, but down the road as well.
Yes, a lot of them actually use the same equipment. I mean, it might be just like the better version of that brand, the Sure brand or something. But we feel like, and then the other company will probably come in probably just as high as the last bid. But we just feel like what we're needing is nothing, we don't need anything crazy because it's, what we have is so old.
Right.
But anything will be an upgrade, but this stuff is quality.
What kind of warranty?
You're going to come with the manufacturer warranty. Other than that.
I didn't see it in there.
A lot of the shit, yeah, the labor and the equipment cost is it.
Page seven.
Did we follow the question? They all had the same RFPs, right?
They, yeah.
They all got the same information?
They did.
Did you see the difference in the 20,000?
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, of course, they stood out, that was.
There's a, yeah. The stuff that he was trying to sell, like the projector was like 3300 or something. The one other one was like 1200. That's $2,000 difference there. Some of the other equipment, he just hosed way up on it.
Mr. Garrison's question was, is fought on, and I appreciate him asking that, because if the RFP is clear, and I'm sure that if he wrote it in, most certainly is, then one is not following the RFP, they're trying to add more stuff than what we actually need on it. That was telling me.
Correct. Yes, so we told each company exactly the same thing.
Understood.
Basically, I haven't met with all of them, and they took it from there. They got their own bid put together. They put their stuff together and sent it over.
I guess it's proprietary system as such, is there any type of annual service contracts?
Once the equipment is purchased, it'll be on IT to maintain, and then go, and any type of, you know, changes, or if it needs to be worked out, will be coming from us.
Unless it's under warranty.
Unless it's under warranty.
And I did find, Norris pointed out, warranties one year, just for public record. And I just have one more question. The equipment as such is adaptable in case there's upgrades later for jurors to have audio and video individual displays and monitors at their stations, so it's upgradable as far as?
Yes, correct. Yeah, and with the wireless mic system, so that's going to be a huge benefit, you know, as everyone, you guys, the meetings down there, so, yeah.
Good research.
Yeah, they are, it's just going to be, like I said, it's going to be night and day to what we have now.
Well, and it may be a precursor, because we're looking at upgrades for the commissioners that might be in next year's budget, that would parallel some of this, whether we continue to be here, or if we look back to the courthouse to do meetings or stuff.
Right.
So that anything we would get that might be here or there for the commissioners to use would also be integrated in the system. Got a motion?
Second. Got a motion or does that, I think members have been a while.
Well, I'll move. Matt, are you good? We can't, we can't hear you, Matt. Jamie, you want to look?
I'm sorry.
There we go. Yes.
Okay, so who is going to be responsible for, A, maintaining this equipment, and, 2, operating this equipment? Because, you know, that soundboard is not just something you want people fooling around with and going around with, that's fairly sensitive equipment.
IT will be maintaining it, correct, Jamie?
Correct, yes.
And it will be up to the court to operate.
Yeah, they'll, I'm sure they'll have somebody that's taught.
IT maintaining it up to court to operate it, Matt.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I guess they would have some degree of training.
They will.
Yeah, that's why we want to use.
Yeah, that company will definitely show, you know, they'll show us how to use it, you know, will pass on the knowledge to Mark and his staff.
Well, that's one of the reasons to use the same system of the courtrooms you're using across the state too, so.
Right.
You'd know a former DJ would ask those questions.
Well, and that's the church DJ now, so, yep. All in favor? All right, we. Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Jamie. Next up, Mrs. Tammy Cody, Child Fatality Prevention Team Report.
Hi, Tammy, Health Director.
Hey, Tammy.
Good afternoon.
How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Overworked, I know, work about 70 hours a week on just the average week, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, and we are all mentally and physically exhausted these days.
Sure you are.
I am here tonight to share with you our annual Child Fatality Prevention Team Report, and a little bit about the CFPT team. In Article 14 of North Carolina's General Statute 7B, the General Assembly finds it the public policy to prevent the abuse, neglect, and death of juveniles. The General Assembly mandated the establishment of a statewide, multidisciplinary, multi-agency child fatality prevention system that consists of the state team and local teams. And so what we do there is the record of all deaths of Madison County children, birth to 18 years of age, are reviewed, and it takes about a year before we get these reports in. And so we go through these in great detail to see if there's something as a community that we could have done to have prevented a death. And the goal is to make sure that those don't occur in our community again. We meet four times a year, and this year, we only had one death to review, which is good and bad. It's good we didn't have more, but the review of the death of any of our children is always extremely a tragic thing. And the review we had this year was a result of a genetic birth defect, so there were nothing for us to really evaluate on what we could have done different there. Also, the, on 11/16, we got the report for the North Carolina infant mortality data, and it's not, it's not great. In 2019, the rate remained the same as in 2018, with 6.8 deaths per 1,000 live births in the state. And the March of Dimes report card on prematurity gives us a grade of a D+ for preterm birth, which is the leading cause of infant mortality. So there's definitely room for improvement in our state. You have a list of the team members that sit on this team, and these are mandated positions that are there. Are there any questions that I can answer for you?
Got any questions, Matt?
No, I don't have any questions, but before Tammy leaves, I would like to share something with you guys.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to recognize Tammy, and if she, and Norris, if I'm stealing your thunder, I don't know if you mentioned this in your report or not, but she was voted by the, by Landis Sky to receive one of the five outstanding public health director awards in the region.
If that's you, can steal that thunder all you want to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Thanks, Tammy. Thank you, Matt. Good job, Matt. Matt, Matt sets all. All right, next we have Carrie Ledford, Industry Finance Officer.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm okay. So before you find for your approval, item A, which is Budget Amendment Number Six, and I'm pleased to announce that it's less lengthy than the previous ones had been. Again, I am requesting your approval to reallocate part of the additional salaries, which were covered by the CARES Act funding. Some of this will help cover the needed repairs for, in the basement of your Health Department. I provided you a copy of that contract for reference, that should be with yours items. You also see that the majority of this will go to building back up your contingency fund. If approved, your, if you approve this amendment, your contingency fund will be up to $279,000.
Any questions, gentlemen? Got any questions? Got any questions, Matt? You good? Okay.
Make a motion to approve?
I will second the motion. All in favor?
Thank you.
Five oh eight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, you have Sept, Octo, I guess that'd be November's financial report. On the top of the first page, you'll see that we are 41.65% into our FY '21 budget. For all funds, we've received only 44.14% of our revenues, which is high, which is higher than we, the average is now. And next month, with the deadline for, well, that'd be this month, for December, with the deadline being for the interest-free tax payment draws closer, you'll see that this number should rise considerably.
So the numbers are good for this time of year? Are you saying they're head percentage wise?
Or head percentage wise, and you'll see a greater amount even into this month, for next month's report. Our expenses are at 38.23, which is up somewhat, but is still below the 41% that we are at currently.
Carrie, I know you've spoken.
Go ahead.
At one of the other previous commissioner meetings about sales tax being up.
Yes.
Most likely probably based off internet sales, but how are we, is that still a trend we see?
It is still trending up. We budget, we, well, the former county manager budgeted low, he budgeted for not, so not only are we above what was budgeted, we are above what we were at this time last year.
Yes.
Yeah, so we are, our sales tax numbers are still coming in very strong.
Good. Got anything, Matt? You good? Okay. All right, they'll have a motion to approve, or you got another question, Michael, for sure? Okay. Got a motion to approve?
How many motion to approve?
Second. All in favor? Five oh eight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. All right, IT is taken care of. 11 is Mr. Norris. Good morning.
We are continuing working on the Health Department and courthouse renovations projects that have been previously discussed. I met with Tammy today. We will be meeting with the architects next week. The architects have been through the courthouse again. They have met with Mark, they've also met with one of our resident judges, and we will have additional information available that will be distributed to all of the board within the next 10 days, and anything else that comes in prior to our next regularly scheduled meeting in January. We plan to have an extensive update and preliminary recommendations ready for the regular January meeting. The information on the glass partitions, as I said earlier, Mark just got a clearance today for that to be covered by the state. The gentleman is going to do it, and by the way, he's done other courthouses like Anson County and others. He's sort of been suspension on the bug. He, may I correct you here, he's not sick, he's just waiting for his results. But he will be back in the next few days to proceed with that, and it will be a first-class installation. It will not in any way deteriorate from the appearance of the courtroom, and if we choose to leave it there for a very long time, it'll be very high quality. It's actually storefront quality glasswork that's going in. We have, and are proposing, and the IT department has agreed, to relocate the IT department within the next few weeks from this building to what will, within a matter of days, be the vacant double-wide out on Elizabeth Lane. And the Department of Elections is returning to the old admin building. They're almost totally complete with that. And Jamie's been out and looked at it. It's a much more satisfactory space than what we have here, I mean, they're a closet.
Matt's got a question. Yes, Matt?
So my only concern about that, and I'm grateful for those guys to have extra room, but what are we going to do about stepping up the security out there? Because that's going to be a bunch of valuable equipment sitting out there.
We will have to do something with the security, and we have had an issue of one break-in that we know of in that building. Jamie and I have already talked about that, and we will, we'll put in some additional security. Unfortunately, it's like this building, which is also very isolated, this structure is. There will be a little bit of flip-flop in terms of what we are covering here now in terms of operation. But Jamie, why don't you add one of the things that most people didn't know that will be a positive for you when you leave this building? Tell the commissioners something I didn't know until you told me the other day.
Regarding the network?
Regarding the network, that you have to operate across.
Yes, so with being in the building currently, we have to worry about NC State University's network as well. Some of the stuff that we have here, when I tried to connect ourselves to that building network and add ourselves to that network, it killed NC State University, and we can never get with them to get that fixed, so we just selected how it was. But by going to the trailer, will be on the finance network, and that will put us on that building router with a lot of our departments, libraries, pressure Ds, tax office, DSS, so we'll be, to get it connected to everybody. So that will help a lot. And also, for future reference as well, the GIS department is in that building, but it could also be costly moved.
Yes.
But I understand with the tax office state, it will often be GIS, so I don't know if that's feasible, but, but yeah, that's just.
Excuse me. Matt, did you hear that?
That, the primary thing is that here, they are on the university system. By going there, they will be on our server system. Yeah, okay, we're good.
If you don't mind stepping up the microphone, just do a brief outline of the reasoning and the benefit.
He'll need to come over here, because Matt has to get on YouTube.
Right.
Get close to the computer. Yeah, if you could get close. Just get close. He's on his play too, you, Matt. Yeah, I know.
Yeah, so the biggest thing, between me and my team, we met, obviously, space is one thing. Having, if you go to my office, I have a backup server, the big server for all the remote computers, you know, we actually, and we have, if we had room to upgrade, we could space that stuff out, have a workstation room, have, you know, when we get 27 computers in from DSS, we don't stack them to the seat, you know, we'll actually be able to space them out. So that was the biggest thing, and the network being on the same, that actually helps us a lot, being able to reach all the servers from my backup server. So that would make it a faster process.
Yeah, and in fact, the server, to me, was really. And in fact, the server to me was, was really the, the signature point on top of the convenience and others.
Yes.
To, to get you off of NC State and get you with the hour server.
Yes. Yeah, it would just be nice to be on that router, uh, which is our, obviously, our, our big boy of the county. Our happy one.
Thank you, Jamie.
All right, Matt.
Is, is there no, um, cameras up there at that place?
There is right now.
There is.
There is.
Okay.
And we're going to add more.
Okay. Good.
Tell them, tell them some of the upgrades that you already made to the finance office.
And is these cameras, are they, would they be able to hook, be hooked up to, say, uh, EOC down here, sheriff's office, your house, whatever? Because I know now with the systems and houses, you know, somebody comes in or something, it alarms your phone or something, I guess is what I'm wondering.
I see, Jamie, yes.
If, if somebody could be able to...
There is soft, there is software that we can purchase that will see these cameras and be able to give remote access.
Okay.
That is something that we can definitely do.
Explain to the commissioners, now, some have been in the building, the upgrades that you've already done to the finance office. That you could obviously do next door.
Right, you're talking about the camera, the...
Yes, the buzz in, the whole bit.
Yeah. That's there. Cameras are easy to add. The network is strong enough. And actually, we just upgraded to gigabit in the county, which hasn't been, we have never had that. We've only had, uh, 250 mags. So, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we save money doing it.
Yeah, we actually save money.
We actually save $100 a month. It's great. But, uh, yeah, I think that with additional security, obviously, uh, locks, we'll, we could be able to see our equipment at all times.
Okay.
We'll know exactly who comes in there if somebody wants to come in.
We need that, we need that down in front of the courthouse too. Well...
What kind of cost are we looking at as far as, as far as, um, structurally, uh, controlled environment? You know, as far as your AC, your HVAC system? Are you going to have to make any upgrades to them?
No, no, it's...
I think it's all been upgraded over.
Yeah, it's, it's basically moved in, right?
Expandability, you've got plenty of room to expand as the IT department expands and grows?
Yeah, and there's a, a 24 patch panel, port patch panel right there, uh, mounted on the back wall there in the kitchen, so... I would definitely have a s- room for a server rack.
It's fair to say this, this, this building would, would fit long-term needs, projected needs of expansion.
We're going to, and we're going to need it.
Yep.
If we're going to improve as IT, we're going to need a server, we're going to need a server rack, we're going to need the backup server there, our remote server on, we need everything in one spot. Nice needs to get you with cameras on it, you know, and stuff, but...
Thank you, Jamie.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
All right, thanks, Jamie. Carrie Nolan, our new planning and zoning director has arrived, getting settled in. And Daniel Metcalf has arrived and is getting settled in as director of transportation. We have moved Terry over in the direction of doing work on some of our longstanding projects, including addressing the fire districts issue where we have the fire departments that are serving and not having, that he's going to be working with that. We're actually going on Friday, and Mark was unable to go, but we're still going to Spring Creek to meet with the Spring Creek folks about the next phase of working over there on that property. As Connie and I went over there much earlier, we got one thing done, and that community center's done. And, uh, actually, we have breakfast in the morning with, uh, Rotary Club Chief and the Chamber of Commerce Chief, Morris Hill. But, uh, he's settling in. CARES Act DSS update, you will find that in your materials. And this is the county general assistance program under the COVID-19 funds that we allocated. And the number of applications received to date are 172. 82 of those have been approved. 42 of those were applications up to $500. 40 applications up to $1,200. 78 applications have been denied. 45 were denied because it were really not COVID-related. 33 for other reasons. Five were withdrawn, seven pending. And the total amount spent so far is slightly north of $47,000 of the funds allocated. As of right now, there is a balance in that account. The DSS board meeting, Craig and I had the other day. Connie will work as best she can and with the other folks to expend the funds. We're not going to, however, send funds that are not correct. There may be some of those funds that will be returning to the county. They will not directly revert to the federal government. They will come back first to the county. And Carrie and I have been working on a list of priorities, so we will do our best that where none of that money, uh, reverts, it will be properly spent. The towns are up to speed. They are down to a matter of virtually all of the funds that were allocated to the towns. I mean, we're literally in dollars that have not been properly accounted. Carrie, is there anything else I need to add there about CARES?
No.
Okay, we're, we're good. We have received notice that ServiceMaster has withdrawn its contract to serve the portions of our buildings that it was serving, and that's legal for them to do at the end of this month. And in closed session, Brooke will discuss the personnel and how we're going to deal with that. Mr. Chairman, at this point, I am ready to move that we go to closed session for personnel and property.
All right, I got a motion for closed session and no decline of general statutes 143-318 period 11A in parentheses, 6 in parentheses. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Five of them.
Thank you.
Thank you. You good? You here now, Matt?
All right, Matt, we are into Personnel and, all right, and Brooke, Brooke, hang on just a minute, I'm gonna turn to Brooke. All right, rock and roll.
We're making a motion for three part-time custodians.
Right, I'm requesting to hire three part-time custodians and to move forward with restructuring the Transportation Department to be Transportation and Operations.
Any comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the recommendations of our HR Director.
All in favor?
No, I need a second.
I'll take it to motion.
Yeah.
We're good, we're good.
Got a second? All in favor?
All right, Brooke.
Five.
Thank you. All right, Matt, we're coming back to property.
Wait, 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 we didn't talk about restructure of transportation.
Yes, we did.
I don't know if that needs to be a vote or not, because we didn't mention it just now.
She denied it.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
All right, Matt, now, Donnie, thank you for correcting me.
Mark, I do think it's just worth noting that in this, in this process, we are, in this restructuring, that we are looking at a potential savings of the...
Savings of fifteen thousand dollars.
Fifteen thousand dollars, yes.
The, the original DSS savings, and I'm gonna speak to Craig here, it's not on our agenda, when that report's made will be even more than was originally projected. Every time we move, we try to save money. We don't always pull it off, but we try. All right, Matt, we're back to Mountain View. All right, the school superintendent has contacted me and requested, they say they have no need for the property, and they have requested it be made surplus.
He says we need to amend the agenda.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Need to go back and amend the agenda.
Sorry, I've got a terrible headache tonight, gentlemen, you'll have to worry.
All right, we're gonna amend the agenda and make this, are we gonna make it twelve, and move a germents twelve, or gonna make it E off of eleven?
It would need to be a separate item. It would need to be twelve, and then we'll do a general later.
This is gonna be twelve discussion of property.
Most to approve that, that we amend our agenda to have these two property items discussed in public.
Mr. Chairman, sorry to interrupt. We've already done that, the agenda of property was eight, that was part of the motion.
But was that part of closed session, or part of...
It was when you amended the agenda at the beginning.
I'm in agreement.
You requested to add it.
Okay, so we'll just leave you there.
I would trust me, if she said...
Okay.
If she said they closed that, I would argue with her.
I don't. Thank you, man. All right, so the school system, per the superintendent, wanted me to inform you that they are requesting that this property be declared surplus, and so that it could be now purchased for, and obviously, it would be developed for residential property. It probably, I don't know what the particular restrictions of the town or R.C.O. are, but it's probably two or three or four building lots, depending what city water and sewer. So Matt's point, it is probably worth quite a bit of money. And the point raised about that if we do declare it surplus property, what would be the disposition of the funds raised, okay? I think, and I, he didn't put these exact words, but I think that he's expecting those funds would come to the school system. However, that would be up to the discretion of the board. My personal thoughts, and I don't mind sharing these, would be that the money should at least be shared, okay? If we decided that we sold it to the highest bidder, that since the school system is relinquishing it, will never have access to it again, okay? That they receive half of the funds, that half of the net funds come to the county. Now, that's just my, my thought.
Who... I'm a little confused. Who's, is it county property?
It is county property.
Is it, yeah. What, how is the school getting bought, or why?
It is property that has been assigned to the school system over the years. Donnie, you might want to explain that sort of quirkiness.
I don't know who owns this property. Is it in the county's name, or is it owned by the school board?
Good question. To be honest, I do not know.
Owned by the school?
If, if the school board owns it, then before they can dispose of it, they have to offer it to the county for us to purchase it at what's called a fair market value, or a negotiated value. If we decline to enter into negotiations to acquire it, then that frees the school board up to dispose of it in any manner according to law that they see fit, and then they can keep the proceeds of it. Now, if it is in their name and we own it, school board don't have a dog in that race. They, they don't get any say in it. We can do with it whatever we want to do with it. I'm assuming, since they've reached out to you, my assumption would be that they own it and they simply want to go through the process of offering it to us and want us to decline it so that they can then dispose of it and use the money and whatever means that they see fit.
That would be, that would be logical. We did not engage in that conversation.
Okay, my understanding is, is that if they do dispose of it and they have any kind of debt service, they have to apply those funds to the debt service before they can use it in their general fund.
Okay.
But usually, what they would do, the way the process starts, is that they, if they own it, they would send a letter to the county commissioner saying, "We own this property, we don't need it anymore, we're looking to dispose of it, we can't dispose of it till we offer it to you, are you interested in it?" Remember the Laurel...
Yes.
The Laurel School Board.
Laurel School.
Same process. So let's figure out whose name it's in.
Well, let me turn this back.
My, my intention is to bounce it back to him.
Yes.
Have your formal request after some research is done.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we table this topic until we have more information and clarity regarding ownership of it and intent.
Yes. Michael, Michael has made a motion that until we have more information, and Donnie has said we will need to determine exactly what the wishes and what the process of the school system was, rather than just a general conversation. And so that is the motion, correct?
I have a second.
We have a second from Dr. Goforth?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Are we tabling?
We are tabling, yes, sir, until we have further information.
Five of them.
All right. Now, this one is more informational. This is showing the property that is in the rezoning on Friday. The individuals wishing the rezoning and wishing to purchase that have reached out to our planning and zoning officer, as well as our inspection staff, and have told them, now this is through their real estate agent to them, that if that goes through, they would like to purchase additional property that is adjoining up to possibly two acres, yet to be surveyed, from the county. I do not know the exact dimensions, it's just for pure information. No proposition has been come, nothing's been brought forward, other than a couple of phone calls made that it's the, it's approved on Friday, and I expect it's that property just under what they're buying, but that's just for pure information. No formal, nothing formal has been brought forward, okay? And that's the only property updates that I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, if we've got any further business?
Yeah.
Any further business, Matt?
Good, brother, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
We are adjourned.